City Council Meeting for the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for November 17th, 2020. And our first order of business this evening is citizen and public communication. And traditionally, what happens in this meeting is that we do have some people who may want to say something. And so I actually will give two opportunities for that. One now during citizen public communication to speak either to incoming and outgoing elected officials. Also, this is your opportunity if you want to speak to anything that's not on the agenda. When we get to items number five and six, I will allow, I'll do another call to see if there's anybody who wants to speak. And so at this time, if there's anybody who wants to speak to tonight's items or items that are not on tonight's agenda, if you would please raise your hand. Terry Cowan, you have the floor. Terry Cowan, you are self muted. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you and Phil for your service to the City of Sunset Valley. I want to congratulate the citizens on their high level of participation in the election that we just went through. They've selected the leaders and new people to lead the city forward. Sunset Valley is the city where democracy and civility still works. I'm looking forward to working with all the citizens of Sunset Valley, new officials and former officials to keep our city a great place to live. And thank you, thank you all again for everything you've given to Sunset Valley. That's it. That's all. Thank you.
Charles Goyette, you have the floor.
Good evening. I'd like to personally acknowledge our outgoing city council members and mayor. Thank you, Mayor Cardona, for 11 years of dedicated service, for your strength in leadership, especially over the last year during this terrible scourge of the COVID-19 plandemic. Your service has been an inspiration to me and the impetus for my return to city matters after a 10-year hiatus. Likewise, my appreciation to Councilmember Ellett for his strategic input, particularly his focus on the city's budgetary process. And for Councilmember Gonzalez for always being respectful in my opinion, and whether intentional or not, for being instrumental in passing the latest parking ordinance for Pillow Road, which has effectively solved a problem that has plagued my neighborhood for years and years. Let it be a model for solving other parking issues in the city. I welcome my new mayor and city council members. Mayor Bruner, you have big shoes to fill, but a great opportunity to make your mark immediately by moving our city back into the real world again. Please make it your first priority to bring us back to City Hall. The virtual town hall is not as efficient, nor does it bring out the best our residents have to offer. Furthermore, we need to maintain our current focus on preserving our tax base, which means keeping our focus on establishing Sunset Valley as business friendly. In my opinion, developing a plan to integrate the homestead property with our three shopping centers is a key strategic development. I genuinely wish you all the best, and I promise you, I'll be monitoring your progress. God bless.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to speak during citizen comments? Ketan, you have the floor.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to sign in this evening to say two things, what everyone else has said too. First of all, thank you to the mayor and to Councilmember Ellett and to Councilmember Gonzalez. All three of you have dedicated a lot of your time and your energy and your vision to the city. And we really appreciate that. Having been in the position of, you know, being elected before, I know that there's a lot of time that goes into it, not just the time that we see at council meetings, but a lot of the time beforehand and afterwards, you know, talking to residents, talking to staff and all too. So thank you to all three of you, especially to the mayor. I know, you know, we've only gotten a glimpse of how much time you've put into this over the years of being mayor, especially with, you know, with two little kids and, you know, who are great. And it's just, you know, thank you for your service for that. And also, I just wanted to say welcome to our incoming new elected officials, to Mark and to Rob and to Alfonso. I guess I can still call you all by first names since you don't have official titles yet. But looking forward to working with you going forward. And I'm sure all of you will keep the best interest of the city at heart. And I think everyone on the call today and everyone who's in the city is looking forward to whatever we can do to improve the city and keep things and keep things in place that are going well too, because, you know, your success is our success. And we're looking forward to that. So thank you all tonight.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak during citizen comments? This is your opportunity if you want to speak to anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Once we get moving, this meeting typically closes pretty quick because we do our outgoing comments. And then once we swear in, the meeting usually adjourns almost immediately. The first regular called meeting of the council is tomorrow. So it's a little bit abnormal. So if for residents who are looking for the first action items for the new council, you can post comments right now as that meeting has posted. And then I believe the next meeting that we'll post will be the council retreat, which I don't, we always call it a retreat. It is not a retreat. It is a work session. And I believe this year it may be a two-day work session. It is open to the public. I'm not sure. I'm sure information will be coming soon as to whether or not that is a livestream go-to meeting or if it will be an in-person meeting. If it's, if it's livestreamed, it's open to the public via go-to meeting. And if it's an in-person meeting, the public is also welcome to attend. And Sylvia, before, it doesn't look like there are any other hands up. Is there anything that you want to add just from the administrative stuff that I covered before I move on to the next item?
No, ma'am, that's all. But I would like to echo the sentiments of everybody in the room. I want to say thank you to the outgoing council. I really, really don't believe folks have an iota of an idea. Perhaps those have served, but this year was an especially mind-altering, life-changing year for a lot of us. And we somehow managed to put everything aside and get to work, roll up our sleeves and continue to do the work our residents not only require of us, but need us to do. So thank you from the bottom of my heart to all of the electeds that are leaving office. And whoever said it earlier, you've got some big shoes to fill for the new guys. You sure do. I hope, I hope we can hit the ground running and continue the good work this council started.
Thank you, Sylvia. Okay. And again, I'll do one final call if there's other people that jump on or if there's anybody that wants to add anything. And we are not going out to pasture. We're just losing our titles. So, you know, for those of us leaving, we are still going to be here. Item number three is approval of the minutes from the October 20th, 2020 regular meeting. And so on this, I'll be looking for an approval for the October 20th and the October 27th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve these? Councilmember Medicus?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve as corrected.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosengarden, are you our second?
Yes, and I'm hoping the correction is that Medicus voted twice on October 20th.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I'm the second.
Great. Thank you. Okay, councilmembers, I now have a motion to approve. If there's anybody that's opposed to that or wishes to speak to this item before I call for vote, if you please raise your hand. And councilmembers, if you would please cast your vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. And then Sylvia, if you would read the vote back once you have it.
Councilmember Ellett, aye. Councilmember Reed, aye. Councilmember Medicus, yes. Councilmember Rosengarden, aye. Councilmember Gonzalez, I'm still waiting. Councilmember Gonzalez, aye.
Great. Thank you. Motion passes. That brings us now to item number four, which is to canvass the returns for the November 3rd, 2020 general city election and approve a resolution of the canvas and certification as to the results of the general city election in the City of Sunset Valley, Texas, held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Rosengarden?
I move that we accept the vote. I'm sorry, what is the, I can't, you're not moving the page, so I can't see. I'm gonna go back to it.
The canvas results.
Canvas, thank you. I couldn't see it. The top, okay. I move that we approve the canvas results of the vote.
Great. Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Rosengarden. Councilmember Reed, are you our second?
Yes, I am. I second that motion.
Thank you. And Roxy, did you need to add something to this item?
Yes, I believe that the motion also has to approve the resolution. The, I need some language in there. It says that the resolution for the canvassing is also, I think it's attached at the end of that memo.
Yes, it's, and approve a resolution. That's in the descriptor. Sorry.
Yeah, so we need to add that to the motion as well, if that's what you, we intend to do.
So moved. If you need me to do it again, I'll do.
No, that, that's good enough. Councilmember Rosengarden, Councilmember Reed, can you confirm as the second?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. And so then at this point, if there is anybody who wants to speak to that item, if you please raise your hand. Seeing none, councilmembers, if you please cast your vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, and Sylvia, if you please read the vote back once you have it.
Okay, Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Rosengarden, yes. Councilmember Ellett, aye. Councilmember Medicus, yes. Karen, Phil, Rudy, and Councilmember Reed, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. This now brings us to item number five. And now that we are, for those of you, for our other elected officials, Councilmember Ellett and Councilmember Gonzalez, I can see you. Councilmember Ellett, did you wish to turn your camera on or no? It looks like you may be on by phone. Councilmember Ellett?
I'm, I'm, Madam Mayor, I'm on by phone. I do not wish to turn the camera on.
Wanted to make sure that we weren't taking up all the spots if you needed one of them.
No, thank you. Appreciate that.
Sylvia, was there anything that you needed to add here before I move into allowing each of the members to speak and then also calling for another call out to the public if there were any comments?
No, but if you'll, if you'll show us your, your plaque that normally would have been delivered to you in person.
Well, so I can't since I'm trapped, as I've told you all before, I'm trapped in my bedroom. And so bedroom is closed, door locked. But I will say this, the plaque was so exciting for the children that they already started taking the gavel off and on. So I already had to hang it. I already had to get the drill out and hang it to keep them from, they love the idea that that gavel pops off and they can run around the house with it. So.
Oh, gosh. I hope they don't hurt each other.
It is in my study.
Can you put it up to the camera? Like, it's kind of far away. Councilmember Gonzalez, oh, there you go. There's the delay. Okay. Very nice. Okay, that's all. I was just being nosy because I didn't get to see them.
Thank you for delivering that to our house today. At this point, is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? And then I'm going to allow each of the outgoing elected officials to take as much time on the clock as they want. And then we will move to swearing in the new candidates. And the way that we will do that will be doing a virtual magistration, which doesn't work much different from when you're in person. I will swear the new mayor in. And then the new mayor will swear in the new candidates. And then the new seated council will do the final item, which is to adjourn. So at this time, is there anybody else in the public who wishes to make a statement which would include any of our existing councilmembers? Is there anybody else who wants to speak? If so, please raise your hand. Councilmember Rosengarden?
Yes, I wanted to personally thank you, Mayor Rose Cardona, for all the hard work you do. I do know how much work it does take, because anybody who volunteers for such a position has to spend lots of hours to make sure it's right. And I know, I see your dedication and I appreciate it. Also, I wanted to thank Councilmember Phil Ellett for coming out and making changes that I wish I would have thought of. So I appreciate that. One of them was that from now on, every three years, we are going to be revisiting any vendors who we give money more than $10,000 to. We are going to go back and relook at and go out for bids again. And so that was a great change and I really appreciate that. Again, I wish I would have thought of it. And Councilmember Gonzalez, it's been a learning lesson and appreciate you volunteering, because until you sit on the dais, you don't realize how difficult the job is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to say a great big thank you to all three. All three have put in a huge amount of effort, in particular, Mayor Rose Cardona with the many, many years of service. So I really thank you. And I also want to say that every one of you, each one of you can look at your work and point to significant changes. And that's something to be very proud of. And I'm very proud of you and I'm proud of your service. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Medicus?
To want to thank you, Mayor, for all of your hard work. I know the hours you've put in are tremendous. I don't think anyone really has an idea of just how many hours you've put in. But I want to thank you for that. And also to Councilmember Gonzalez and Ellett, thank you for the time that you've put in and the things that you've brought forward in council. And I look forward to working with all of you on committees and continuing to hear your voice, because your voices are all important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Bruner, last time we'll be calling you Mark Bruner. Would you like to speak?
I would. I was going to save it till after the agenda items, but, you know, this is the appropriate time. Rose, I really just wanted to extend my, my thanks to you in particular, because of all the help you've been to me in my public service over the years, not just recently in the transition, but the honor I had of serving with you for four years. As a city council member, I learned a lot from that experience. And it made me realize, you know, how, how awesome of a job you do. And I just really think the city owes you a debt of gratitude for all the time that you spent on this. Councilmember Gonzalez and Councilmember Ellett, I really wanted to send my heartfelt thanks to both of you as well. I have the honor of serving with each of you on council. I've known you outside of council, constantly, Melissa, and I really appreciate your guidance and your thoughtfulness and what you bring. And I know, Phil, that you will continue to serve the city and bring your ideas, you know, in the capacities that you can. And I would look forward to working with you as well. But I really appreciate everybody's service and, you know, my heartfelt thanks to all of you for your support.
Thank you. Anybody else before I move to our actual elected officials to allow them to speak? Councilmember Rosengarden, did you mean to put your hand up again?
I did.
Okay.
I wasn't sure if this was an appropriate time to mention this or not. But just to give you an idea of the dedication of Rose Cardona, we never missed her in a meeting but twice. And that was when she had her two babies. So we didn't even know. I know I didn't know, and I know the other council didn't know that she was even pregnant. So we come to the dais, I'm not kidding. We come to the dais and at that time, city administrator Clay Collins told us that Rose wasn't going to be in tonight. And I said, why? Because that was very unusual for her. And they said, because she's in the hospital with delivering a baby. And I'm going, oh, my God, didn't even know she was pregnant. So that was, that was very, very unique. And that happened the second time also. I did not know she was pregnant. She hid it well, or she just didn't show much, or I didn't pay attention, or what. But those were the only two times she missed a council meeting. That's the dedication. So thank you.
Thank you, Rudy, for remembering all that. Anyone else before I move to, and I'm going to actually go in the order that everybody's listed here. So I'll start with Councilmember Gonzalez. Did you, you don't have your hand up, but Councilmember Gonzalez, did you want to say anything?
Can we hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I deeply appreciate everyone's service, certainly outgoing Mayor Cardona and for all her hard work. And Councilmember Ellett for his innovations and the things that he brought to the city. But in particular, I would like to thank all the residents that supported me over the last two years. It is a, it is a thing to serve on council and it is time-consuming. But the amount of support that I got and advice from residents really informed my service. And I want to send out a deep thank you to all the residents who helped me in the last two years. And I want to thank all the existing council members who donate all their time. And I certainly appreciate all the time and skills that they have brought to council. And I'm grateful that they're continuing to serve. And I'm really excited about the incoming council. And so I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you so much. Thank you to everyone for all their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. And Phil, I'm looking for you. Phil, Councilmember Ellett, did you want to say anything as your outgoing remarks?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank you for your over one decade's worth of service here. Your professionalism, your impartiality, the sheer intelligence you brought to this position. And also when the terrible news of the COVID hit way back early in this year, I can't think of a better person I would want to have at the tiller of this vehicle than you during this crisis. I thank you for your service. I thank you for your commitment you made. I thank you for making every effort that you made to make this a better city. We are indebted to you. Indeed, these are huge shoes that's, that to be filled. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to turn my camera off. I'll turn it back on when it's time to swear in. But I'm, I gotta get all my gumption together for the stuff I'm about to read. Okay. Okay. I'm also going through and I'm trying to edit out everything that I've already heard said this evening, so I'm not repeating things. Certainly in terms of thanking all of the elected officials. And I think that the only thing I'd really like to highlight is that I don't, until you've done the walk of being an elected official, you really don't know how much time it takes. And so for people who sometimes it's easy to get on social media and be critical or to come to a meeting, there is an amount of thanks and gratitude that we as a community certainly owe, always owe to our elected officials. And tonight, I wanted to share things from a couple of different categories. I wanted to share a little bit that was personal and then a little bit to the new incoming electeds. And I won't lie to anybody, choosing to run for a final term as mayor, it wasn't easy. I, I ran out of principle and it was something that I discussed with many of you that are here in the meeting this evening. I had a personal belief that there were personnel changes that needed. And I ran almost singularly on that agenda and wanting to have as many councilmembers at the time stay on board for the completion of the city facility project. We still have a lot to do, I think, on both of those fronts. But I think we're in a much better position to hand off to a new mayor. And I think that's good. To me, that's the best legacy that I could give to a new mayor is to leave the city better than I found it. And to then be able to confidently say to the next council, do right by what Sunset Valley needs moving forward, not what we needed, quote unquote, then, whenever that was. And I didn't appreciate that when I was a councilmember. And the mayor and I give my word to the city, I will never be that mayor that refers to a utopian point in time that nobody can actually define and that makes it very hard for councilmembers to know where they need to go moving forward. From 2009 to now, meetings have become more sane, more controlled, more timely. We have evolved into a more professional organization with more transparency, less folklore ruling over the city. And the largest change that I have seen is that there's a greater allowance now of opinions from all streets. And when I got here, there was still a stigma on the meadows not really, having been here long enough to understand what Sunset Valley was. And then certainly for my neighborhood, which had been in existence for about a year, that existed. I'm happy to say that that's probably where we've evolved the most. You know, and looking at tonight, you can see that. You have Mark Bruner, Alfonso Carmona, myself, Jeff Burdette, who lives in between all three of us. So, and all of us have served at some point over the last 10 years. And then we have a handful of other homes in our neighborhood that are now volunteering and serving on committees. When I first moved here, I don't believe that there was anybody, or there may have been only one or two other homes that were volunteering at all from the villas. So to me, that's, that's good, positive stuff. Now for something a little bit, as I move into talking to the new elected officials, a constant point of confusion, which in part is because I am a very private person. But for those of you who may or may not know, I'm actually from Kabul, Afghanistan. That is my cultural background. And for the few, there are a handful of residents that know my American Mother's Journey there and back in the seventies is a movie in and of itself. My personal journey as a person made me very strong at a very young age. And that undoubtedly, anybody that knows me knows that that contributes to who I am as a professional and it contributes to my integrity. I've known pain, loss and struggle. And I know absolutely what it is to be an underdog, to not be somebody of privilege and to be forced to welcome challenge. I am most certainly nobody's darling. And people who get to know me closely, they know. If there's one thing that I despise most, it's power plays within gender. And so this year, I experienced more of that than in all of my years previous here in Sunset Valley. I have absolute confidence in what I know of Rob Johnson and his family, and then also Mark Bruner and his family, that what I saw happening during the campaign period, it will stop. Because I also have confidence in their families and their wives, that that just isn't, they aren't the type of families that will perpetuate that. And now I'm going to poke fun, so I've seen a little bit of their, you know, the discussion of, you know, there's winners and losers in an election. If you guys think I'm a loser right now, please don't, 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 just think again. I'm not. And if anyone in Sunset Valley at all, if any of our residents think that representing the minority vote of Sunset Valley is somehow not important. is somehow not important, I'm here tonight to say I couldn't be more excited to say that I am representing, you know, the lower number of voters that voted for me. That doesn't mean I think I won, but I absolutely feel honored that anybody would vote for me and ask me to represent them. And once you swear in your candidates, it's important that we all represent the city. And of course, if I haven't made it clear already, I'm a persistent woman, person, professional, and I do feel an absolute duty, and I've had this duty since probably 14, 15, to be an advocate for my community and for anybody who feels like they don't have a voice. I'm not losing that by losing my title. I'm just moving on to the next chapter of that, and hopefully, many of you will be there to continue to hold me accountable and cheer me on. Today, we have three men who've been elected and are now being sworn in for a two-year-long job, and it's just that, it's a job. My personal calculation of time contributed is over 5,000 hours of work time. And yes, I tracked it through my legal software that I use for my law firm. Over 5,000 hours, and that's just work time. That doesn't include time spent with headaches, tears, stress, loss of sleep, and annoying my family members discussing city issues that they probably could care less about discussing. I have taken hits. I've shed tears that were very real, and so, for the new elected officials, no matter what, you have my support, you have my empathy, and I know, you know, Mark knows that because he's had many conversations with me over the last few weeks, and that's sincere. I don't wish to do anything that handicaps the ability for elected officials to do their job, because it's a hard job. You're accepting something that's incredibly public, that's hard. You're taking an oath to be fair, transparent. You're taking an oath to be a fiduciary of the city, which not even committee members can say that. It's a real thing. It's important. You will be representing all of us, not just those who voted for you. In the camp, the campaign period, Sylvia could speak to this as a city administrator, it's a flash in the pan every single year. It stirs people up, emotions get high, but starting tomorrow begins the slow, boring work, and that's the hard part. Please, if I could ask you to do anything, ask lots of questions, and go talk to people who don't agree with you. It will help you do two things. It will help you better understand the arguments that are out there for or against something. It will also help you yourself gain sympathy and empathy for people who will eventually possibly be disappointed when you do vote in a way that, you know, doesn't fit with everybody. And as the judge that I used to work for, the best lesson she taught me was that every time she gives a decision, half the room is unhappy. So, be prepared as you vote. You're going to have to learn to distance yourself from some things, and learn how to communicate and take on that criticism. And then I want to close by sort of dedicating my 11 years to something, and I'm going to try my hardest to get through this without crying, and how I'm convincing myself to not cry is that it is about a resident, and that resident is here tonight, and so I'm trying to really do this in their honor. And I haven't practiced this or done this, which for some reason, the more I practice things, the less likely I am to be emotional, and I have not practiced talking through this. So, I had a very, very personal moment as an elected official, and I've had lots of really extremely amazing moments throughout my life, serving, doing volunteer work, doing immigration work, pro bono work, doing immigration clinics through my DACA experience over the last four years. Man, I have been in some tear-jerker rooms and moments with families. But there's one moment in my history of this city that defines sort of why I serve Sunset Valley and why I will continue to serve Sunset Valley. On Tuesday, November 6th, 2018, we had an election here in Sunset Valley. Two days prior to that, we had a Sunset Valley that lost, Sunset Valley family that lost their 29-year-old son in a tragic accident. One thing that's never made me comfortable as mayor is that I would get phone calls to receive personal information about families based on ambulances, death, illness, just various things. So, no different, this evening when I got the phone call, I felt this incredible sadness because I suddenly knew that I had personal information about one of our residents, and I just didn't even know how to process it. And I felt this incredible sadness and a desire to tell both everyone in the city and at the same time, make it so that nobody in the city would know, which was a very conflicting feeling. I spent that night doing what I could to research this person, because I didn't want to talk to anybody else in the city about it, and I also didn't want to bother the police department, because I knew they were doing what they were supposed to and reporting it to me. What I learned that evening on my own was that this man, who I'd never met, was 29. He was a great son, a great man, that he was a person that had joy and excitement and adventure, that he was a brother, that he was a student of Texas, and that he was a soldier to our nation. And so, which, of course, all of this made me feel that much heavier and more sad, because as I sat and read these things on that evening, on that Sunday evening, which was November 4th, I realized that this individual was everything that an American and everything that a Sunset Valley family should represent. He was somebody that I never met and that I would never know. This isn't even the hard part. Two days later, November 6th, I was at City Hall, and I witnessed the mother and father of this fallen soldier who had passed away two days earlier at City Hall voting. Watching him, watching that, and seeing them, and seeing their sadness, and seeing that they were heavy, and again, feeling this guilt that I knew why. That moment will stand with me forever, to see two residents as they couldn't have possibly been at a sadder moment in their life. But they showed up. They showed up for our city. They showed up for themselves. They showed up, I'm sure, for their son. It was, I'm sure, a way to honor probably everything that their family represented. And I'm choosing to, to recognize that as the moment that really embodies why we are a community, why we contribute, why we volunteer, and I will never in my entire life forget that quiet moment that was completely mine. They didn't know I was watching them. Nobody knew what I was watching. Nobody knew what I was processing or how meaningful it was. We all must show up, and we all must do more than put signs in our yards that say we love and support our neighbors. You have to do more. We should not gossip about our neighbors. It is too small of a city, and we should not attack one another, because what we need to be doing is what that family did that night. We need to show up for our community. And I don't know how better to explain all of this, but to just end up by saying thank you to everybody for letting me serve for 11 years. I'm not going away, as I said before. I have a full day tomorrow, and actually, I have a full day for the next two weeks of doing as much immigration work as I can possibly fit into every single day. And thank you to that Sunset Valley family. I am dedicating my 11 years of service to you and to your son, and I give you my word that I will forever show up and serve wherever I live and remember that day. And with that, thank you. And we are now moving on to our final item, item number six. And I will allow, if there's anybody in the room who wants to say anything, to welcome our incoming people before we swear them in. Mine will be short and sweet, which is, you know, thank you very much, Mark, for all the time that you gave over the last two weeks. It was a lot. Mark spent quite a lot of time, both with me and with Sylvia, on the phone, going through meetings and making it so that we had a very, very healthy transition. And that's wonderful. You can't want anything more when you have leaders of a community transitioning. So, thank you to Mark, and he's going to do a great job, and hopefully, we're all going to support him. And so, Sylvia, would you unmute yourself and let me know, other than just reading this swearing in, is there anything else that either one of us need to do to ensure that this is done in an official way?
Uh, no. Rajeen, do you have anything to add? Or Roxy, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to add.
I don't have anything at this time either.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So, Sylvia. Do we have Mark? Mark, there you are. Okay, Mark, can you turn your microphone on, or can somebody turn his microphone on? Okay, and Mark, would you speak, just so that we know that you have a hot mic? Oh, it looks like you're self-muted. Can you try again, Mark?
There we go. I think you can hear me now.
Yes, okay. You're going to repeat after me, please. "In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas..."
"In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas..."
"I, Mark Brunner, do solemnly swear..."
"I, Mark Brunner, do solemnly swear..."
"Or affirm that I will faithfully execute..."
"That I will faithfully execute..."
"The duties of the office of the mayor for the City of Sunset Valley..."
"The duties of the office of the mayor for the City of Sunset Valley..."
"Of the State of Texas..."
"Of the State of Texas..."
"And I will do my best of my ability..."
"And I will do to the best of my ability..."
"Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States..."
"Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States..."
"And of this state, so help me God."
"And of this state, so help me God."
Thank you, and welcome, Mayor Brunner. Congratulations.
All right. I think it's my duty, my first formal duty, is to swear in the newly-elected council members. And Sylvia, I will start with Alfonso Carmona. If you want to unmute Alfonso, and Alfonso, if you can speak to make sure that we can hear you.
Let's see. Yes, they should have received their oath of office today, too. Yes, we can hear you. Yes.
Great. Alfonso, if you could repeat after me. "In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas..."
"In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas..."
"I, Alfonso Carmona, do solemnly swear..."
"I, Alfonso Carmona, do solemnly swear..."
"Or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office..."
"That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office..."
"Of councilmember for the City of Sunset Valley..."
"Of councilmember for the City of Sunset Valley..."
"Of the State of Texas..."
"Of the State of Texas..."
"And will to the best of my ability..."
"And will to the best of my ability..."
"Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution..."
"Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution..."
"And laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God."
"And laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God."
Welcome, Councilmember Carmona.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we will swear in Robert Johnson, and if you could unmute him and verify that he can speak to us.
Okay, Rob, I think you are self-muted.
Okay, there we go.
There you go.
Rob, if you'll repeat after me. "In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas..." "In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas..." "I, Robert Johnson, do solemnly swear..." "I, Robert Johnson, do solemnly swear..." "That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office..." "That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office..." "Of councilmember for the City of Sunset Valley..." "Of councilmember of the City of Sunset Valley..." "Of the State of Texas..." "Of the State of Texas..." "And will to the best of my ability..." "And will to the best of my ability..." "Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution..." "Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution..." "And laws of the United States..." "And laws of the United States..." "And of this state, so help me God." "And of the state, so help me God." Welcome, Councilmember Johnson. Thank you.
Welcome. So, I've unmuted Councilmember Carmona, and I've left Councilmember Johnson unmuted as well, in case there's anything they'd like to say.
Yeah? I would like to say something?
Yes.
Okay. To all citizens of Sunset Valley, thank you. I appreciate your support. Now, as an elected member of the city council, we need to work together. I need your opinions, ideas, and suggestions to improve our quality of life. We can do that together. I listen, the citizens, and I hope that we work together. Thanks again for all of that. That is.
And Councilmember Johnson. I haven't prepared. But I'll just say, I'm incredibly nervous, but I do my best work when I'm nervous and excited, and I'm really excited to get to work tomorrow. So, thank you. And I just want to extend my thanks to the existing council members again, and to Eric Cardona. Your service is greatly appreciated. These are big shoes to fill, and I am very much looking forward to working with the new council, with the existing council, and with the citizens going forward, and hearing your advice and your feedback, and letting us know when we get things right, but more importantly, letting us know when we can improve things. With that, I think we're at our seating of the new council agenda item. However, I think that's just a note to say that we are now formally seated as a new council. If there's anybody else that wants to speak, either, you know, existing council members or anybody else in the community, this is a last opportunity to do that before we adjourn.
I'll just say a no to the incoming council members. I don't sleep much, so just because I send you an email at 2:00 in the morning does not mean you have to answer. I just need to figure out a place to put my iPad so that I don't start working when I wake up and I'm thinking about something. I'm working on putting it in a different room, so I won't bother you late at night, but I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Sylvia. I'm looking forward to working with you and the amazing staff that we have. Thank you so much for your help during this time, and I've been transitioning and all throughout the last year that you've been here. I really look forward to collaborating with you going forward.
My pleasure. Thank you.
And I don't see, I'm not organized, so I can't see if anybody has their hand raised, but Sylvia, if you just want to let me know, kind of double-check if anybody else wants to speak. Otherwise, we will move forward.
I'm speaking, and I was muted myself. There are no other hand raised at this time.
Karen, Karen Medicus, Councilmember Medicus' hand is raised.
Oh, I don't see that. Oh, there it is. Yes, Councilmember Medicus, let me unmute her. Okay, you're free, Councilmember Medicus.
Thank you. I just wanted to welcome the new members. I look forward to working with everyone. I'm always open for hearing your thoughts and ideas, and looking forward to our first meeting tomorrow, and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Carmona? Any discussion? All right. Well, welcome all the new council. I really appreciate it, and looking forward to getting to work as Rose said. So, with that, we'll take a vote. The way that this works for the new council members is that you'll type your vote into chat. That can be seen by the organizers. So, you'll be responding "aye" or "nay" in there when I call for a vote, and then Sylvia will be reading off the votes so that it's part of the public record. So, with that, if all council members could vote "aye" or "nay," and then Sylvia, once you have the votes, please read them all.
Okay. Councilmember Rosen Garden has her hand up. I'm not sure if that's for the vote, or it's a second fee. Adjourn.
I'm not sure if that's for the vote or it's to second the adjourn.
What I'd like to do after the vote or probably before the vote is if everybody's mic could be on and we could all clap and say congratulations. Because otherwise, it feels too quiet in this room.
It does, it does. Let me go there and unmute folks.
Be careful because they have votes. Yeah. All right. Yeah. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, then Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Carmona.
I think I second the motion. So maybe Sylvia, she didn't hear about that. I second the motion too closely.
You did, we heard that. Councilmember Rosen Garden wanted to take a moment before we adjourn to allow folks to give an audio clap or cheer.
Good idea, excellent idea.
Yeah.
For your feedback. All right. Thank you so much. All right, Sylvia, do we have votes in yet?
Uh, let's see. We have Councilmember Reitz, yes. Councilmember Medicus, yes. Council, Councilmember Johnson, yes. Councilmember Rosen Garden, I. Councilmember, Councilmember Carmona, yes.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone. We are adjourned at 6:55 PM, the shortest council meeting we've had in a while. So we'll see you tomorrow for a longer one.
Congratulations.
Thank you.